Just a reminder, Paul, the meeting is being recorded for the Stigler News Sentinel.
Okay, thank you.
Paul Stories?
Here.
Parker Fay?
Here.
Marvin Oliver?
You didn't change anything, did you?
No, I don't think so. Oh, God.
We're gonna recognize the guests we passed around. We put everybody's time. Now we're going under new business. We doing new business, Simba.
Ah, you got some pretty good shape, buddy.
Yeah, Randy has a plumber situation.
Uh, we hadn't had a lot of luck locally, but I did call Mullen Plumbing, and their fee is $500 for the first visit to analyze what the problems are, and $105 an hour travel, work, and whatever after that. But I just discussed with Rick, Rick checked into All About You Plumbing, Jeff Staples over in McAllister, here comes 724. He's worked on it before, they just never had the parts to fix it before. So now we've got copies of all the parts that are used up there. So what we need to do is probably get them down here, let them order all the pieces and some spares, and then that way when they come, we'll have the pieces to fix it. Because just traveling back and forth to look, you know, we're not getting anything accomplished, it's still costing us money, so... You, the commissioners asked, do they, y'all want us to investigate this further? See if they get something going with it?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to get it going.
Clark, you okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll move forward on that. Are we in new business?
Yes.
Karen, I got you that deal for Newcomen Associates for the P.O. of $4,020. I was gonna ask about courthouse fundraising where we got on it.
Well, we had, we've had one meeting, and we're meeting tomorrow at 8 o'clock?
Yes.
Tomorrow at 8 o'clock. Take the second step on it, get rolling on it.
She wants to do the smaller things first before we start on the larger things. Said some of the larger things that needs to be needed may take a little longer to raise money on.
Yes. Okay, does anybody measure the water in those test wells?
No, I can do that thing. Maybe.
Okay, I know this one here and that next one show any water in them, I can see it down in there.
What size is it when we lay it through there?
There is, there is water downstairs already around the windows. It is six tenths of rain.
Oh, man.
Yeah. And... Also, I guess Matt Webster came up and repaired the heating system last week. Seems to be working pretty good for now. And then, something I wanna bring to you guys, commissioners, about, up there on the second and third floor, there's two heating syst-, heating and cooling systems up there in place right now. There's gas, fire, and furnace, and a freon air conditioner. And there's two units up there, and I got the key from Ron this morning to look at the unit on this end. But we'd had to get with Matt to look at it, but I think we can probably semi-cool and heat the third floor. We really don't care about, you know, keeping it at room temperature or anything like that, just keep it freezing. But if we would cut the hole out for the ductwork, we could cool all the courtroom, judges' chambers, and probably the jury room, heat it cool off those units by going through that area that's above the courtroom. See, that courtroom ceiling goes all the way to the ceiling. It's twice as tall as what it looks like. It's gonna fall ceiling. Plus, there's no insulation on top of that, over the courtroom right now. I had a light up there and was looking at it earlier. But if that'd be so, that might be a real economical way to at least get the second floor where it's comfortable. So if you guys want us to pursue that, we'll talk to Matt and get him to come and look at it, see where we go with it. You okay with that, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we'll get there by the way you said.
Okay, the windows up there, I mean, it's drafty up there on that third floor. Y'all still intending to get up there and pop those windows and ceiling?
Yeah, I thought Ron did it, we talked to ones on the second floor, because I checked down.
They're mad up there on that third floor. Coming out of that, there's some holes up there in that concrete wall that's got the courtroom, you know, area in that's just dead space now. And there's air just blowing straight out of that thing. I mean, you can, you get up there to look at it, and just feel that forced air coming out of there.
YouTube to cock and it go along with it.
Very well could. And if you, if you need a personnel lift to get up that high, probably need to get an all-terrain type unit. And if you wanna rent one or something to use or whatever, I'd be glad to go get it. Unless y'all got a little boy, y'all got a little boy set?
How high would it have to reach?
Had to be up to the roof line of the third floor.
Mine's only 60.
42 foot, I mean, I maybe have to get them on. See...
Mine's just 40 foot, I've got it just open, portly up with personnel basket on it.
I've got an electric one that's 36, so you gotta swing it.
Yeah, I can.
It's just not tall enough.
I've been hanging it.
This here's the...
Play in his seat right here.
He not here today?
No, he's not here today.
Okay, so, y'all will make an attempt to start getting the windows sealed up?
Yeah. We got the second floor, I mean, I went by and checked the second floor. It's not a lot better shape than it was.
Is that just the ones in the staircase?
Yeah, around the... Every air conditioning unit, every, every one of them, Ron, I double-checked them. These ones I checked, he talked around, he topped up the holes. We sealed up that big window.
Some of that expandable stuff that you spray it there would be better than silicone? Kind of stuff? Well, they need to, for the outside, you need to use Beetlecock that'll stand the outdoors. I talked about when they started from the inside. Yeah, on the inside, some of that foam would be worse not, where you could see it, like on the third floor, that'd work fine up there, because there's, birds could fly in out of there. There's one of them holes where there's like a piece of wire or something running out, it's for antenna or something, and it's got a big, big hole there. Yeah, yeah, they just drill a lot bigger hole, I imagine get the connector through there. Yeah. We'll, we'll check in with the plumbing situation with Jeff Staples. Anybody got anything else?
Randy, I talked to that one plumber, but he's been checking with the manufacturer of the parts, he said, but, you know, I think he's been checking for quite a while, and he's got no response. Whatever that's worth, I did mention to him.
Well, I found a place in Tulsa that sells the parts for Acorn, they're the Acorn distributor, to B Mac.
Oh, yeah?
We can buy direct from them. So what we need to do is we need to get this Staples to tell us what all he needs, and then order up some spares of all the common pieces up there. Because they come in repair kits.
Right.
And we need to get some kits, and then that way when they come, instead of coming and say, "Well, you need these, you'll have to order them, we'll have to come back." We need to have them there at the jail, ready to be put in, and then make one call, get the repairs made.
I think I remembered you said you talked to him earlier about it. I just had to call him this weekend, and I asked him if he was not interested in working on the jail or not.
I've called six, and so far, there's been mowing plumbing that has broken air, and Rick's got this All About You Plumbing from McAllister. Mowing seems to be kinda high.
That does sound high. TV commercials cost a lot more.
Plus, you're gonna have to pay him for traveling down here every time that comes. We'll, we'll check into this All About You, he's familiar with it, he's worked on it before.
Yeah.
But he told Rick he just never had any pieces to fix anything when he came. They just had to kind of patch it for him, and there was no piece to get involved. Clark, can the DA help you with that matter on that service of 10 entries right away?
I will.
Because if he won't respond... You're about to do it.
Museum of McAllister.
I don't wanna worry that.
He was.
He was.
You know, he could've been moved, but...
What's your problem, or if we had to even?
Yep, he knew where he's at, he might just take the paperwork up there and sign it right there.
You might be glad to see somebody, it'd be...
If I was locked up for the rest of my life, I wouldn't mind having $100 on the books.
Your mom will let you take your thing.
I'll take it, damn.
Anyway, the lady at my office, she's been talking with the right away department at ODOT. They probably told her what she needs to do.
Don't know yet.
Yeah. Because I'm sure this is the first time they've dealt with it.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any new business? Any more new business? Item number five, signed appropriate transfer check, receiving the P.O., make a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Item number six, approved permission proceeding from previous meeting, make a motion on that.
I'll make motion approved.
I'll second.
Yes, possibly.
Yes. Item number seven, approved blanket P.O.'s, we have one from Market Square for $300, and one Lakeport for $800, both to C.S. office, I'm gonna make a motion. Approved item number seven.
I'll second. Paul Stories?
Yes. Item number eight, discuss and take action to approve payment to landowner for $525 for parcel number 38 on Star Road Project. At Chief Scott, I believe.
Yes, I'll make sure to get this D filed. And like I say, it's on that Star Road Project. And it's in the amount of $525.
I'll make motion on that one.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Will tell you?
Yes.
It is Paul Stories?
Yes. Okay, on item number nine, discuss and take action on accepting resignation of Haskell County Sheriff, Brian Hill effectively sent his first 2016. That's his decision. I'll make a motion, we accept his resignation.
I'll second. Paul Stories?
Yes.
Parting today?
Okay, item number 10, is discuss and take action on appointing interim sheriff, Field Sheriff Brian Hill, remainder of his term. In my opinion, if I just nominate Tim Turner, he's gonna be sheriff anyway January 1st, so I'm gonna make a motion, we nominate Tim Turner be the interim sheriff for the month of December.
I'll second that. Paul Stories?
Yes.
Parting today?
Yes. And item number 11, discuss considering implementing a burn ban for Haskell County. Look, I don't, I think, Scott, I might wrong, I don't believe you can put a burn ban on if it's rained ten, three days, can you?
I believe it's...
Over a half inch.
Yeah, I was gonna say, depending on the amount of rain.
I think we'll just table it.
We can table it.
Look at it, if it dries back out next week, but...
If you wanna table, it's just no action, but it's like...
No action.
We'll do no action, because as of right now, if it rained more than a half inch, it wouldn't do you any good if it don't anyway. And this item number 12, Clark, is discuss and consider giving right away easement for a water line on section 30, I mean, in section 30, County Street 9, Route 188. And it is the last road going west on Highway 9 in Haskell County. I looked, and it is not on the county map. It does not have a road number, but in the past, Henry was paid by a gas company to cross that road in the county for the last 15 years. I know the 15 years has bladed it and maintained it. And the guy, he's needing water to his property. And to drive down that road, you cross two parts, two different owners. And I told him I couldn't. You know, if it's not on the county map, I don't, even though the county's maintained it, and the county's been paid for road crossing for the gas company. What do you think about that, Scott? I mean, is that a...
I think that's a failure for, you gonna let them just cut it, or you gonna...
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to give them, the man needs water, because it's well dried up, and he has no water to his house.
I understand, my question is, is he gonna cross that road, or are you gonna stay in the county easement?
He's gonna stay right down the side of it.
Okay.
But...
For how long?
But the county, what my point is, is the road is not on the county map, but it, but the county has been paid by a gas company to cross that road, the gas line, and the county has always maintained it, bladed it, rocked it, or whatever.
Is the county line right in the center of the road?
It's your, it's your west boundary, you say?
It's the far, you know Oak Hill Baptist Church is going west? I mean, when you pass Haskell County, there's a church up on the hill, it's that road right to the east of that church. But my... So I told him I would do a, I would sign a resolution stating that the county has maintained the road, the county has been paid by a gas company to cross that road, that the county has no problem with him putting a water line on it. It don't, it's just not on the map. So technically, I don't know if you...
Could you look on the ODOT county road map?
I looked on the one that we got from Ketto that's supposed to be official, they said told me it's official map, but no, I did not look on ODOT's, but I'm sure that's where Ketto got there.
Is it section line road, or a quarter section road?
Yeah, probably section line.
Is he gonna put it on the west side of this road, or the east side of this road?
He'll have to put it on the east side. Well, no, he decides Haskell County, because he's like...
He is your west boundary, that's the county line?
It's the last road we, on the, going west, but then there's probably, what? 200 yards to the county line?
Probably quarter mile.
Quarter mile, it's not far. I mean, it's just...
Is this the church up on the hill?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's still, both sides of the road still in Haskell County.
Haskell County, okay. My suggestion is, is to make note that you tell this water company where to put this water line in the county easement. So let them put it in your ditch, make them get on the high bank side.
Right.
And be three foot deep, you know?
Well, that's the problem I...
I mean, that's, that's the law.
If it's not, if it's not a county easement...
That's what I'm getting at.
It's the property owners.
Well, you know, private property then.
Because if it's not a designated county road, I don't think you got the authority to give an easement for it.
That's what I was telling him.
That would be Commissioner in McIntosh County.
No, he said it's...
No, it's all in Haskell County.
No doubt, it's in Haskell County.
If it's not a designated county road, it'd be the private, private owners.
Somebody had to give an easement down through there across their property before that road. There, there probably an easement record across whoever it's going to, where it ends up at.
I told him I'd make a resolution stating that it is not a county road, although the county has maintained it, the county's been paid to cross it. As far as the county concerned, we have no problem with the water line.
Has he tried to deal with the landowners?
Well, I asked him that, and he said he's talked to the Oak Hill Baptist Church, I think that's the name of the church, Oak Ridge. They own, when you turn off highway, they own that piece, and he said he hadn't talked to the second landowner, because there's two land, the church and another individual. But I told him, you know, if it's private property, I can't give you an easement across private property. But the thing that goes back to, that I've always been told, is if the county, a piece of county equipment maintains a road, and therefore it becomes open to the public. And therefore it becomes open to the public.
It may be a public, it may be a designated easement for public use, but I don't know if it's, if it's not designated county road. You still don't have authority, I don't think, to give an easement across somebody else's property.
Evidently, it went somewhere all this time.
It goes straight to his house.
Surely we wouldn't maintain this driveway. It had to be county's at some point, wouldn't it?
I don't know. I know when Henry's commissioned, I know he, he maintained it and he charged the gas company to cross it.
You're leaving yourself open, leaving the county open for liability if you can, uh, offer an easement or something.
I'm not gonna.
I'd, I'd take that to my DA and ask his opinion on it. And then.
Is it not on that map?
No, I mean, it's gonna be right, it's gonna be right here in this section.
What is that little dot right under your finger right there? What is that right there? No, your finger, isn't that on it? Is that a little black line right there?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's little squittle lines.
No, that one line coming down, straight down, that's it.
This line right here, is that the road right there?
Yeah.
That one right there, short, squittle around there.
That's it, yeah, right there.
Yeah.
That's official roadmap right there, isn't it? ODOT County roadmap.
Yeah, that's the road.
That's the road right there.
That's for sure in Haskell County.
Yeah, it's just.
Does that show the road up there, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, there's, road goes back north here.
No, there's no, I don't want to go north, that's county line.
I don't know what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, that's the church right here. It's gonna be, it's gonna be this right here.
It's right beside the church.
It's gonna be right here, Paul, right here.
No, that's another road. It's right here.
It's not on that map.
It's on that map over there, Rick, but it's, it's just hugging.
That's your official, uh, ODOT map right there.
The county, I'll be there in an hour and I'll meet you.
It's in the county.
So you, you can see it plainly right here, Rick.
Yeah, I understand that, but is it, but, um.
That's the county road map it too, isn't it?
Is that an ODOT map?
I think so.
It's nowhere near it. This is the one that they paid the county, uh.
Road miles off of.
Road miles off of, this is right here.
Now, this has come from Marshalline Mapping, I guess this is.
Yeah, that's just the one that does the county map, yeah. This is your designated roads over here.
Yeah, it sounds like it might just be a road easement in there because someone traveled it.
Probably an ace or someone.
Property.
They'll give them access to get to his property.
Yeah. Keeping me a landlord where he was able to get to.
Unless at some point in time the county adopted to do a county road, that's the hell, that'd be a wreck of the earth.
But if it is, it needs to be included in the ODOT so you don't get paid over.
Eric, you want me to forward that to Nico?
Well, we'll pay it today in mail until he's.
Let's hold it till they do the job.
He deserves a drink. Hold, he deserves a drink.
So they will send you an invoice right?
Well, our bill works, ain't it?
Oh, that's good.
Pay you when you do the work.
Do I like when he was given the data that he gathers and the thing. Yeah, yeah. So he's gonna talk to the. The windmill, they swear to T M N.
For a month.
No, that's where in January.
It's definitely not county road. You know Neil Edwards, Rick? I think that's who owns it. He owns the fourth interest.
Hope they get along good.
I do too, uh.
Probably the reason he's come to you, they don't involve you.
I told him straight up, I said, you know, it's not on the county map and I, I can't give an easement. If this, you want this road. But I don't, I do remember the county being paid to cross that road when Henry was commissioned, that's what brought up the question, how they didn't get the charge. Go across the roads, not the county road.
You got there, good catching for you, good hanging.
Agreed of him, but anyways. We just have, there's no action on the FOI because I, I, it's not a. It's definitely not county road.
Does that mean we're maintaining it too?
Are we maintaining it?
Yeah, we're still maintaining.
Haskell County has maintained that road several times.
Oh.
Yes.
Are you gonna keep on or anything?
I haven't rocked it or anything, but I just remember when I worked for Henry, I remember, you know, us blading and draping it several times.
Sounds like Henry made one.
I was just told it was a county road.
Yeah.
But when you're just driving, I mean, I, I, I didn't question nothing, I just, you know what they asked me to do.
The person in question probably needs to check, uh, see if he's got an easement, somebody's got an easement for that road, because it's private property, of some sort.
That's it.
He needs to check his easement. If he's got an easement, they give him or a prior owner to it, an easement, it, uh, the easement may include utilities.
I'll check on that, just so we get out of here.
And they donated, they did donate it to the county, like you said, we need to get it where we can get paid for it.
It's abstract. Been donated to the county, I just.
Should show, if there's a thirty-foot easement there, we'll do it.
Anyways, I'll go over and check, run the records over there. So, no real business, I'm gonna make a motion with January.